Live to the public then.
So both letters have the same body. Dear members of City Council, City Manager Andy Walker and Chief Totten, we were greatly concerned when we heard the quote in Friday's Tribune from the gentleman at the City Council meeting who suggested that one way to meet the budget deficit is to cut police funding. Given the increase in drug traffic and use of guns in our respective neighborhoods, decreasing police presence and work is not seen as a way to resolve budgetary issues. Perhaps there are things that need to be changed in the department, but certainly not at this time during this pandemic and unsettled time in our country. We strongly hope City Council can find other means to balance the budget. Those letters were signed by Barry Bonnell and Danuta, and I don't want to butcher her last name. Wayne and Mary Sparks, Daniel and Kelly Tino, Melissa and Lawrence Mancotti, and Christopher and Rosemary Richardson.
And all those individuals are city residents, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. If you want to make note of those letters in the minutes, that would be great. Thank you.
I will do so, Your Honor.
Katie, Katie, if you would go ahead and call upon the ones that are live here with us tonight.
Okay, the first member of the public registered to speak is Lee Scandonero.
Okay. Lee, you got the stage.
Oh, great. Hey, my name is Lee. I'm here at 2:30 Mount Hope Street. Thanks for the City Council and city staff for dedicating yourselves during this pandemic to public service. And in particular, I'm really appreciative of access to these meetings virtually, and I hope that it continues in the future. There's nothing I love more than sitting in my basement, playing video games and listening to Mayor Stern's do a roll call. So I appreciate that. And I'm certainly not an expert in budgeting, but I'm going to talk anyways humbly about some of my values, and I'll leave the numbers to city staff. And to start, you know, this budget really blows. And my main reason for talking tonight is not to solve this year's budget problems because there really isn't a solution that makes much sense. I think, of course, we have to raise taxes this year. That's pretty guaranteed, I think. And I think, you know, we need to rethink our police budget. I do appreciate those comments that were read earlier about, you know, maintaining safety, but I think there are some ways that we could reduce costs for our police while maintaining the same level of work. In fact, reducing the workload, and I'm happy to talk about some of those later. And of course, also, we need to ask some of these large nonprofits to increase their contributions to the pilot program or contribute at all. Like Westbury, I think, could definitely contribute, and I don't know if they've been asked, but I think they've got some responsibility like the rest of us to add to our city. And of course, I think we also need our region to work together for our collective health rather than act like we're in competition for goods. I'm not sure if council or staff caught in the Tribune last month, but Wesmead Chairman Don Bovard was quoted stating he wanted to keep taxes low in Wesmead in order to attract businesses and residents from the city of Meadville. And, you know, this is a guy who lives in Wesmead and works in the city of Meadville for our county government in a non-taxable building. And, you know, I'm not throwing shade here, but, you know, that's a little harsh to be trying to openly snipe people from the city. And more importantly, I think we need the city to provide a clear vision for our future, where we aren't in the same position every year. This vision includes regionalization, a county reassessment, home rule charter, and putting pressure on state legislators to fix our broken tax system and municipal funding structure. As I said before, it's clear to me we have to raise taxes this year. This can has been kicked down the road for too many years, and what was prolonged now must come to terms during a global pandemic, which is unfortunate for the many residents in our neighborhoods who are barely scraping by as it is. But that is what happens when we lack a clear strategy. But we do have a strategy before us. We know recommendations will be coming soon from the Pennsylvania Economy League, and we have to be prepared to act on those. We need to organize and inspire residents to assist city staff in this endeavor. Time and time again, we hear the narrative that people don't want to participate, but that's because they aren't asked to. If we learned anything from the recent authority boards and commission policy, it's that people are willing to step up. It just has to be clear and transparent how they do so. Home rule charter, Crawford County tax reassessment, for instance, requires citizen mobilization and citizen pressure. Now is the time to get residents to understand we need their help. We can't wait until November 2021 to consider if these are options worthwhile. And can't be afraid of inviting regular working-class people into the operations of our city for fear of political backlash. And I'm talking renters as well. You know, we're facing unprecedented challenges right now. It's pretty horrible to live in this world right now when looming crises like climate change, massive wealth inequality, and a global pandemic are just, you know, some of the things that we wake up to every day, none of which are parking, I might add. But, you know, regular people have to be organized to meet these challenges. And I think our city can do that organization. I certainly don't envy any of you or the decisions you have to make, but you don't have to make them alone. I know that I am on your side, my basement, of course, and I'm cheering you on. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, the next individual that registered to speak is Lindsay Scott.
All righty, Lindsay, you got the floor.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so I'm Lindsay Scott. I was born and raised in Meadville. I returned to work and live after college. My husband Kevin was born in Meadville too, and he returned to live and work here as well. We both work in the city. My husband and I have shared some ideas back and forth when we looked at the budget. Kevin and I are not exactly on the same ideological wavelength, to put it mildly, and political infighting is very common in my household. However, with the city budget, we didn't get to our conclusions the same way. We ended up in the same place. Neither of us automatically wants to think of raising taxes during, you know, this pandemic. But this budget issue, you know, for various reasons. It needs to be dealt with. And Kevin, in particular, he is not a fan of increasing taxes. He wants to keep as much of his money as possible. And while I understand his feelings, and I personally like to spend money, and I need it to be able to do that, I know that we're, as a family, not hurting as much as a lot of families in the city of Meadville. And the city has lost more than 1,000 residents in the last decade from people moving away. The city of Meadville, you know, residents already earn significantly less than other residents do in most of Crawford County per capita and on household average. There are less people than before making even less money. To add on additional taxes on the poorest of Crawford seems like a slap in the face. But there's simply no real legal way to levy a progressive tax to give, you know, less fortunate citizens of Meadville a break, and this budget isn't going to solve itself. So only raising taxes also once in the last decade. I mean, it's time, whether we really want to face that or not. A large share of people who work in the city of Meadville work for nonprofits, schools, charitable organizations, medical facilities. And those organizations aren't obligated to pay taxes. And many of the employees, especially the higher-earning incomes, reside on the outer boroughs and townships. My husband and I, you know, we both looked at that budget, and there's just so much amazing stuff that the city pays for, literally making it a great reason to be here. Kevin never stops talking about the Mark. He talks all the time about when he moved away to Warren, like how something like the Mark would be a great experience to be able to, as a kid, been able to ride his bike down there and go swimming in the summers. And I did that every summer. And same with the parks programs that you guys brought back. We love the public works and everything that the Mark does and support them. So for increasing revenue, we batted around some ideas, asking for money outright, asking for grants, different ways to implement green savings, finding owners of blighted properties, decriminalizing marijuana and using fines as revenue. Maybe we can get commitments from some of those nonprofits to contribute more money to our budget, but that's maybe. And we kept coming back to the fact that this is still a structural problem. We have a large segment of the city that is nonprofit and fewer residents who are less wealthy, while we have a continuously escalating public safety budget. Obviously, while completely necessary, we have deep concerns about the police department and fairness and financing. And that is to say specifically, the Public Safety Department, if they're rendering mutual aid of any kind to other townships and boroughs throughout the county, those townships and boroughs need to pay for them. If citizens of Meadville are underwriting the safety for the rest of the county, the wealthier parts of that county should have no issue with funding their police. Meadville City Police Department has only really increased by full-time, to full-time personnel in the last decade, and it doesn't sound like much. How could this be so much of a runaway issue? But simply, the increase in pays and premiums, expenses, have taken us from, in 2012, a budget of $2.261 million for police to an anticipated $3.43 million in 2021. That's an increase of $1.2 million in a decade. In that time, our population has decreased by that 1,000 residents. So that gives the police department less people to police. Our crime rate has actually dropped in the decade from 1.49.4 to 123.6, and that's a difference of more than 25 points. So there's less crime that is being policed. And while per capita policing is not an ideal way to staff public safety, the city of Meadville has that budgetary gun to its head. In 2016, for instance, a survey was completed that showed cities with populations above 25,000, so we have the 12,000 residents ourselves approximately, they typically have, on average nationwide, 21 total personnel per 10,000 residents. We have 27. Out of those, uniformed police officers average 16 officers, like patrolmen, per 10,000 residents. We have maybe 22, 23? So in strictly these terms, by comparison, the city of Meadville itself is overpoliced. And while I am loathe to suggest any termination of a union job or public safety in my community that provides for my safety, based on just facts alone, Meadville has police it cannot pay for. The poorest of Crawford should not be expected to underwrite the safety of the rest. And if we retain the current levels of policing, then we simply have to be able to have them have more to do, more territory, boroughs, townships to police who in turn must pay for those services. So that was just us separately coming to the same conclusion, that it's a runaway expense right now, and we really need to assess it in a way that we can pay for. And I thank you guys so much for your time, and I have now a screaming toddler and a barking dog. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you for your information. Katie, you want to go to the next?
Your Honor, the next one signed up to speak is Danuta, but I do not see her in the participant list.
Okay. We recognize that she was one of the signatures on that letter, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and just go to the next individual, please?
The next individual is Joe Tompkins.
Joe, you have the floor.
Great. So I think I'm just actually going to echo some of the things that Lee and Lindsay said, and I'll try to be short and sweet. But it's great to hear both of them, you know, giving a lot of thought to the problems that we're facing. In essence, that's sort of what I'd like to say. First of all, you know, like Lee said, I don't envy the situation that you all are in. There's a lot of tough decisions. I don't think there's any good decisions that really can be made. But what I'd like to see is more attention to the bigger problems that got us into this mess and that get us into this mess every year. And that's the kind of thing that requires these kinds of conversations to happen beyond just the budget season. So we've got, like Lindsay was saying, some serious structural, long-term issues that can't be solved just by going through budget items line by line. I'm hoping that city staff does what it usually does, which is come up with some, as Andy, I think, has called them before, some budget tricks to get us out of it, but that can only happen so long. I mean, I'm personally, I'm glad to live in a city that provides police and fire protection code enforcement, parks, sewers, paved streets, and so on. But I know that these things cost money, and the cost keeps going up, and we have no way to pay for it. We're basically stuck with the property tax. And that's because the state limits how we can raise revenue. So I think what I'd like to see from council, one of the things I'd like to see is more attention to that problem. In particular, I'd like to see council sort of take the lead and start to work with other municipalities who are suffering from the same sorts of financial problems. I think, as Lee referenced, the Pennsylvania Economy League presentation, I think, that happened a couple weeks ago, as those consultants made clear that, you know, Meadville is not a unique city and its financial predicament, that a lot of other municipalities are dealing with the same issues. And I think it would be great if those municipalities actually got together. And, you know, if our city council started working with other city councils and our mayor started working with other mayors and other township supervisors and so on. And if you all could actually take the lead here and start to push our state politicians, our state representatives, including people like Brad Rowe and Michelle Brooks, to make the changes we need. Because the changes that are limiting us at the level of revenue are really based in the kind of actions that come out of the state legislature. So I'd like to see council apply more pressure there. And I also like to see council apply pressure to the county regarding the issue of tax reassessment. We all know that the county is long overdue for reassessment. We've gone longer than any other county in Pennsylvania since our last full-scale assessment of property values in 1969, I believe. And I know that there are a lot of excuses for why this doesn't happen. The one I hear a lot is that it won't really change much of anything. About 1/3 of property owners' taxes will go up. 1/3 will stay the same. 1/3 will go down. But effectively, what that means is that, you know, the people whose taxes would go down are currently overpaying. They're paying more than they should. And the people, the 1/3 of property owners whose taxes would go up, they're underpaying. They're free riding on the rest of us. We're essentially subsidizing their lower taxes. That's a completely unfair system. The commissioners have proven not to be willing to do anything about it. They like to talk about fiscal responsibility. But if you ask me, continuing to operate on the basis of a system that was put in place 50 years ago, the same year that Nixon was inaugurated, that's highly irresponsible. And I think first, I think Meadville residents need to know that their commissioners are failing them in this regard. And I think that they also need to know that it's also hurting county residents. Each year that goes without a reassessment, we're losing revenue, and this means property tax rates are going up to offset the difference. So if commissioners, if the commissioners are going to continue to fail in their responsibilities to provide a more efficient and fairer tax system, we need you as a council to start applying pressure. The last thing I'd say, and it's echoing the point that's already been made by Lee and Lindsay, we also need our nonprofits to step up. We all know, and I hope the public knows, that nonprofits in Meadville own 45% of the city's total property, but they're tax-exempt. So that means 55% of taxpayers are picking up the slack. And, you know, those nonprofits, they benefit from the same city services as the rest of us who do pay. And as Councilman McKnight actually pointed out about a year ago in an editorial to the Meadville Tribune, Meadville loses out on roughly, I think the number is $2.7 million each year in property taxes that would otherwise be due from those tax-exempt entities. So that's a lot of money. That's a huge amount of money. If we're talking a 650,000 budget deficit and nonprofits that are not, that are not paying taxes in the amount of $2.7 million, that's a huge amount. That's a big way to fill that gap. And even some of our wealthier institutions, like my own employer, Allegheny College, Allegheny likes to talk about supporting the community, but it rarely, frankly, in my opinion, puts its money where its mouth is. If it did that, it would increase its contribution to the city's pilot program, its payment and limit taxes program. And so I'd also like to see the nonprofits step up. I'd like to see Allegheny step up. I'd like to see the hospital step up. I'd like to see Westbury, as Lee was saying, they could step up. Those three, those three institutions alone own millions of dollars of property in the city, and they don't pay anything in property taxes. That could, that could be a big help for us for this sort of budget situation and going into the future. So again, I think we're going to face these problems over and over again unless we start to address the bigger issues. And so, you know, I'm confident that council will come up with a cost-effective and efficient way to deal with this particular deficit, but we need to think long-term. We need to, and we need council to sort of take the lead on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Katie, is there anyone else listed?
Your Honor, the three individuals that were, aside from Lee, that were signed up for last week had indicated they wish to attend this week. However, I do not see any of them in the participant list. So I believe that would be it for public comments.
Okay, thank you, Katie. I just want to thank council. I know we have a five-minute limit, but I feel it's important that the public has the opportunity to express their concerns about the budget, since they do pay for the budget. And I appreciate all those who attended and made their comments known. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for an adjournment.
Your Honor, could I share some information that...
Sure.
Was...
Sorry, Andy.
No, that's okay. Just because it's relevant to, I think, to the current 2020 budget and the 20, planning for the 2021 budget. Just today, the Crawford County Commissioners announced, we had reported to council right in the prior months that we had applied to the county for CARES Act for the reimbursement of, in this case, those police wages, because those were an eligible expense. Today, the commissioners announced an award of $505,867.89 to the city, essentially for reimbursement of those wages under the CARES Act, the County Relief Block Grant Program. So we can discuss at the future budget session sort of the impact, how we might apply that. But I just wanted to share that with council and the public in this setting, in the public hearing.
I appreciate you doing that, Andy. I knew we were going to be discussing that in our regular council member, or remote meeting that we're going to be going to next. You know, that $500,000 is well-received, and we thank the county commissioners. I do want them to, give them acknowledgement that the city of Meadville was not the only municipality or city that received funding. Titusville also did. And I think it's fair that we recognize that we were part of many that have received the funding, and I believe it was $7 million that was kind of divided up. But it's important that we thank the commissioners. They certainly helped the city out with that $500,000, and we appreciate that. Any other council member want to make a statement on that before I ask for an adjournment?
Hearing none. Motion to adjourn, please.
I will so move.
Second.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Turn.
Aye.
As usual, that we continue to operate under a declaration of disaster emergency from the spring. And as many of you council members, and I'm sure our public, are aware, the Pennsylvania Department of Health Secretary issued new public orders yesterday with respect to a more sort of mitigation measures, a targeted, more specific mask policy, face covering policy, that essentially requires indoors or out when you can't, social distance, that you wear a mask. And then also a travel restriction that anyone who leaves the state and attempts, who is essentially entering the state, must either provide a negative test within 72 hours of entering, prior to entering the state, or quarantine for 14 days. So obviously, that could have some impact for the general public who might travel for Thanksgiving, or frankly, our own employees. And of course, there's restrictions and some exceptions to those, both of those orders. But I encourage people, if they want to look on them, they can look on the Pennsylvania Department of Health website. Also, our own actions, right? I did hold a department head meeting last week where, obviously, with the local community spread, increased community spread, some of our departments are beginning to take some actions to limit and mitigate exposure risk in their own departments, particularly in our public safety departments. So the fire department has begun. They have, they have ended station tours for now. They won't be doing any trainings inside the station at this point. And the police department is temporarily suspending fingerprinting services to the outside public. So, and then I was informed this afternoon, the project manager for the Meadville area water authority, Bob Harrington, informed me that they are closing their lobby to the public and that payments, of course, can be made online, mailed, or via their Dropbox outside of their office. And service, new service applications can be done online. So I think that's all I have, Your Honor.
I also want to mention, Andy, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, the county courthouse is limiting access to the courthouse. I don't have the details, other than when I spoke to Commissioner Henry, that that process was going to happen. I don't know if you have the information or not. But if you're going to the courthouse, I would, okay, I would check their website. But I believe they're beginning, temporary, on November 30, I believe, is the date that I heard. So, okay, thank you, Andy.
I will bond it.
Executive session meeting, Katie?
Your Honor, executive session was held on November 4, 2020 to discuss real estate and personnel. And an executive session was held on November 11, 2020 to discuss personnel.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 4 and November 11.
I will second.
Okay. Katie, did you guess who made that? I could not make it out.
I heard both Councilmember McKnight and Councilmember Vogel, so...
Okay. All right.
Is there a preference on who gets it first?
Here's the Larry. He can have it.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
All right. Katie, communications, I believe we have two communications. Would you share those with us?
The first communication is an email that was received from Juliette Hillburn. She is... She is a student success specialist with the Northern Pennsylvania Regional College. They're a two-year college based in Warren, which serves nine counties of northern PA, including Crawford. She is trying to get the word out to folks in Meadville that are, are here and can take classes with them. And she was hoping that she could do a short presentation at the upcoming Meadville City Council meeting on Wednesday, December second.
Second letter.
Your Honor, this is an email from Jeffrey Finch. He is writing to express his opinion on the old neon moon site. He suggests that the city leave it grass, plant a tree or two, something nice, simple, easy, low cost and low maintenance. It would create less of a heat island effect. It would serve as an area to pile plowed snow, plenty of opportunity for future development. It's greener, catches rainwater runoff, potential for income from community gardens or leases for outdoor activities. The area does not need more parking. The lot there now barely ever has any cars, and there's plenty of on-street parking, and the parking garage is practically across the street. He says the parking garage is by no means full, and there's also a site of the old parking garage, and it's never close to full.
Okay, thank you. Manager's report, Andy.
Your Honor, before we move away from this, how would you like me to respond to Ms. Hillburn with respect to her request for, for a presentation on the December second meeting?
I have no problem with that. Majority of council are right with this.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Okay.
If you recall several months ago, and refer to the public hearing we just had, a number of the comments that have been made by the public are valid, and they've been made by members of this council and the prior council. We need to devote our energy to major projects, whether it be pushing for a county-wide reassessment or promoting a government study commission or anything else. And every time we have a presentation like this, you are taking time away from items that really need the attention, and we never end up getting to them.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other council members comment?
Yeah, I, I understand what Jim's saying, but who's to determine what someone else feels is more important? You know, he has his opinion, and of course, the residents have their opinion. So I, I feel that they should have the, the time.
Yeah, I would, I would maybe, I, I hear what Jim's saying, and I, I agree. I think right now we've got some pressing issues to address, and maybe if we can respond with a timeframe that might be, where things are maybe a little slower, I, if, if that's January or February, to see if that would be, would work better with her schedule if things are, have slowed, might not need to be dedicated fully to the, to the budget. I, I want people to be able to hear about it, but I rec, I, I agree in part with Jim, that we've got a lot of work to do right now. So maybe, I would maybe say respond with a timeframe that may feel a little slower for, for us, where, where it might be more suitable.
Okay. Sean, your thoughts?
I, I, I agree with them on this. I wait till we're on TV again and we're in public, and we're not doing this online. I, I want to hear what she has to say, but I just don't like this format. So can we wait till, hopefully, January? Things are going to cool down here at some point, I would assume, so that's all.
Katie, would you put that, that we would re-contact her, January, February, depending on our schedule and how things are running, that we could then contact her, you know, and set it up at that time?
It's duly noted, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Andy, any other comments on the communication? Okay. Andy, you there for your manager's report? You might be muted.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry.
No, no problem.
I think, I, we want to investigate other platforms for our meetings. The, the controls of their system are somewhat challenging, so that's also on our to-do list. So I just, I just have a few other quick comments, because most of my attention, of course, has been turned to the budget and other matters. So we were informed yesterday that the, with respect to the Porter Street footbridge project, that the additional fencing that was being conducted by change or an additional scope of work, because we had some additional grant funds available, that was completed yesterday. Public Works, I communicated with Nathan, who actually happens to be on the phone here, he'll present later under our next budget session. But there is a handful of punchless items that the Public Works Department needs to do with respect to safety. And so we anticipate that we can open the bridge, remove the temporary fencing around it early next week, but at this point, I'm waiting for the final green light from Nathan, and I will, and will issue a brief press release and notice on our Facebook page that the bridge is reopened. But we anticipate that being early next week, just while we hit a few punchless items before for safety purposes. The beautification committee is about to roll out a holiday decorating contest for residents, a residential decorating contest. I saw draft, poster and press release for my review earlier this afternoon. I have not had the opportunity to respond yet, but I expect that will be kicked off shortly. And that's a partnership between the beautification, city's beautification committee and the Meadville Independent Business Alliance. And there's a, a donor who is donating gift certificates to downtown businesses as part of the prizes. So more information on that will be rolling out shortly. Friday, December fourth, the first Friday of the month, is typically the light-up night in the city of Meadville. Still working on final details with the Chamber of Commerce. In fact, don't have a permit from them yet, but I anticipate that there will be, there will be Santa, it'll look slightly different. I think the ceremony in Diamond Park will probably be shorter. I don't believe there will be any sitting on Santa's lap due to the potential spread of the coronavirus. But also, the Meadville Independent Business Alliance is, that is first Friday as well, and so they are doing, I have a permit from them that I'm ready to sign, and that'll be for closure of the blocks of Chestnut Street, between the Diamond and Market Street, between Market, I'm sorry, between the Diamond and Park Avenue, between Park Avenue and Market, and then Market to Water, leaving those through streets open, Park and Market and Water. But there will be a number of ice sculptures, I think at least twenty of them, last I heard, throughout downtown as part of their festivities. So I encourage people to explore that as details emerge here shortly as well. I think that's all I'm actually prepared to share with you. I'm sure there's more, but those are the only notes I've made.
Andy, I'd like to throw in there that the Friends of the Market House will not be having the carriage rides this year because of safe distancing of individuals being on the vehicle wagon. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that they will not be there this year, at least by the Friends of the Market House.
All right, thank you.
Under old business, do we have anything for authorities, boards or commission? I don't see anything listed.
No, Your Honor, just the, the general update on, on the vacancy list, which has not changed since the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. New business, Katie resolution authorizing free two-hour parking for the holidays for the downtown businesses.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing two-hour free holiday parking within the city, resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that the Council of the City of Meadville does hereby authorize two-hour free parking at designated metered on-street and lot spaces in downtown Meadville during the holiday season from Friday, November twenty-seventh through Thursday, December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
A motion, please.
A motion.
Second.
You got that, Katie?
I heard both council member Roa and council member McKnight.
Junk can have it.
Thanks.
All righty, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Tern?
Aye. I just want to remind the public, you know, we really appreciate the businesses downtown. We're trying to help them as much as we possibly can through this pandemic. I encourage you to shop local, support these businesses, they could certainly use your support. Katie, we have another resolution, B, please.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville adopting a property maintenance abatement, payment and lien policy. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas ordinance number three-six-seven-six of two thousand ten, an ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopted a property maintenance code which establishes and recognizes minimum standards for the maintenance of property in order to protect the health and safety of occupants and the public within the city of Meadville. And whereas the ordinance pursuant to Article seventeen-twenty-one-point-one-three-D references the recovery of the city's costs associated with the correction or abatement of any violation, which creates a serious health or safety hazard to the public because of an emergency or because the persons responsible for the violation or property have failed to comply with orders or notices issued by the code official by means of a municipal lien against the subject property. And whereas the City Council of the City of Meadville desires to implement a payment and lien policy for property maintenance abatement in order to actively collect payment for city costs associated with abatement of violations and for collection via municipal lien. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the City of Meadville hereby approves and adopts the attached property maintenance, abatement, payment and lien policy and the form attached hereto, as in providing an effective policy of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms.
Motion, please.
I would so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Jim and Autumn. Andy, discussion, you want to pull us in?
Yeah, I'm going to actually, Gary Johnson, he's still on the line? There he is. You'll need to unmute yourself. So council, this is, obviously, the, the context is here right through the property maintenance code. And when, when people do not abide by a notice of violation, and then have to go in and abate, this is a policy by which we would collect those payments and implement liens. Gary, you're still on mute, as far as I can tell. Are you still with us? Maybe Gary's not here.
I'm, I'm here. Can you hear now?
Yep, we got you.
Okay, well, yeah, thanks. Yeah, in the past, it's been kind of hit and miss with the lien policy over the last several years with abatement, so we wanted to formalize that. To do that, we basically used the recent stormwater user fee lien policy as a template. So this would cover abatements that we would have with mowing and clearing grass and weeds, clearing snow, boarding up windows and doors when necessary to prevent hazards, and then the hauling of junk and garbage that we instituted in the last year or so. And so we just wanted to make sure that once we actually incurred these expenses, that we were able to, to recover those in the case that property owner isn't able to pay for that. So this would institute a formal policy by which we would bill and then follow up with the lien process at the back end to make sure that it's, once the property sells, we'll get that money back. So I don't know if there's any specific questions. It, it would follow up after we did the abatement. We would bill if it isn't paid within thirty days, or set up a payment plan within thirty days. We would then generally quarterly forward those amounts to Shaper Law to go ahead and file at the courthouse.
Hey, Gary, I, I'm wondering, does this, like, the county, does that count too? If these are county-owned properties?
I, I assume you're referring to tax claim properties?
Yes.
Well, by the time it gets into tax claim, I'm not sure that we can file liens against it. That's, I think that's kind of a legal question at that point. I'm not sure that I'm qualified to answer that. What I will say is, once it goes into tax claim, the owner of record, if you will, is still responsible. So we will still send notices and issue citations against the, the owners of record. But as far as obtaining, actually filing a lien against the property, I'm not sure how that works once it's in the repository.
It doesn't help, but that makes, I, I got you. You don't know either.
I do share concern on this, however. It's most probable that a number of the properties that are going for liens are properties where the owners aren't able to pay their taxes, or they have mortgages against the property. And in short, what is owed against the property on primary liens and secondary liens would be more than the property is worth. And so we will be expending money to put a lien on a property, perhaps only to have it sold at judicial sale, divested with liens. You need to understand that that may be a real possibility.
Gary, I'm wondering if you could speak to, do you have a sense of the, the kind of ownership of, of the properties, right? Are, are most of the properties that we are, that we incur these kind of expenses through abatement, are, are they, do we have a sense that they're owner occupied? Are they rental properties?
Frankly, it's, I would argue that it's all over the place. It would be both owner occupied rentals, it'd be vacant, they may be occupied. It's really all over the map, honestly. I don't know that we could really put it into any kind of specific class. What I will say is that based on our, on the invoices that we've had, the, from a numbers perspective, we, if we'd had the lien policy in place, and ideally if we had been able to lien all of the properties, if we, or all of the abatements, it would have been about twenty-two hundred dollars in twenty nineteen. And we estimated, because enforcement was down this year, about fourteen hundred dollars this year. So it's, it's not a ton of money, but the, the goal is really just to try to make the city as whole as possible when we get into these abatements.
Will we be aggressive in executing these liens?
I'm sorry, will be, will be what?
Aggressive in executing the liens. In other words, if, once you've got the lien on the property, are you going to actually go to court and, or, in a sheriff's sale type of situation?
What I'll say, I'll start out there by saying, I think that might be above my pay grade as far as taking people's houses, but I don't know that we would be that aggressive when we're dealing with these types of, of liens and these amounts. If, if it gets to be a, a major amount, potentially we could, but I would argue that with these amounts, I'm not sure that we would want to be that aggressive in going after them.
Is your concern that we should be aggressively going after them, or?
My concern is, let's say that you repair the sidewalk, let's just say you repair a sidewalk for fifteen hundred dollars. They don't pay you, they don't make arrangements to pay. We file suit, we incur another two hundred dollars, now we're up to seventeen hundred dollars. We take it to court, we get a judgment, the judgment on record, which is maybe another fifty dollars, and we leave it for, revive it after five years, it probably expires. If you do keep reviving it, there's still a very good chance that the house or property in question won't be worth what the sum total of its liens are. Whereas if you are aggressive and pursue them more quickly, you may have a better chance of getting equity. I don't want to take people's houses away from them, but at the same time, we have an issue of. an issue of paying for having services performed, which the property owners ought to be performing themselves, like paving the sidewalks.
Gary, it's the mayor, I have a question for you. I'm pretty sure I have the answer on this, but these violations, are they been prior to the pandemic, I would assume, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know that we proposed at this, this point in going back too far in filing liens for citations or violations that would have happened too far in the past. But we've had, you know, about $1,900, $1,800 worth of abatements that have happened since the pandemic started. I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, it does, all right. Anybody else have any questions for Gary or Andy on this?
Yeah, well, I just have, yeah, something I need to clarify. I remember when, I believe it was, a property owner in Fifth Ward did not want to repair his sidewalk, he wanted to replace it with gravel. Instead of taking any action, he just tabled it, and I don't know if any action's been taken since then. So have we already set a precedent of how we're going to deal with things like that?
I, I think, Larry, the one property you're talking about, I believe they had to come into compliance with the repair, did they not, Gary?
I'm not clear on what, what they, what the specific issue was, what the property was.
It's the corner property on Lincoln Avenue and Trey Cross from Peters Heat Treat, and they never ordered him to fix the sidewalk. He wanted to do, to head it off before we did. And his sidewalk isn't that bad, and we tabled it because we couldn't come to an agreement on what to do about it. But we never, it never got to the point where he was ordered.
That's my point. Are we going to end up tabling because we set a precedent? You know, someone can say, well, you didn't make an order on that. So I'm, I'm in a kind of agreement with Jim. I think we should be more proactive, if not more aggressive, to follow through.
So to be clear, in the case that you're discussing, right, or that you're remembering, there was no property maintenance violation found. It was a request to remove sidewalk under the city's sidewalk ordinance. What we're talking about here is when a notice of violation under the property maintenance code, and it's not, I mean, it's a number of nuisances that we're talking about. It's really how we, how, when there is a notice of violation, how we address that and collect that. I will note, right, that our staff capacity to do this is the zoning adminis, Gary Johnson's the zoning administrator, the building code official, the health officer, our ability to aggressively go after and do any of this is severely challenged. And to, and every one of these is a case management, right, on what are the liens, what are the, what are the other liens? At this case, we're just wanting a simple policy to simply collect on the notice of this money that the city has spent, and attempt to recollect that and make the taxpayers whole.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Andy?
If we adopt this policy, may I suggest that we revisit it in one year and see what the real-world effect has been?
Sure.
And then at that point in time, we may need to adjust it.
Sure.
Any other questions for Andy on this? And Katie, would you mark that down, that we revisit this in a year?
Duly noted, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Um, council member statements. Autumn, I'll start with you.
Thanks, Leroy. I'll keep it pretty brief, because I think we're behind, but good job on keeping us, on catching up on time, Leroy. I appreciate, I appreciate the folks that have spoken tonight, live at the meeting, and have also submitted written comments about the budget. You know, and he delivered some good news to us and, and good news to the public during our, our public session, which can be great in the short term, but certainly doesn't address kind of our long, our long-term issues, what was referred to as structural issues. And, you know, so while it, we'll talk a little bit more about it in a bit, I imagine, but, you know, while this money from the county could be really helpful this year, the huge deficit that we face and that's been keeping me up at night for the last couple weeks, and I'm sure it's the same for many other folks, right? It, it won't go away, we'll be in the same place a year from now, right? If we don't make some changes. And I'll be a broken record here, but I think that we need folks to, to weigh in, to be part of these changes that we're trying to make to that, to that point. I put out a very unofficial digital survey that I've shared with council. I posted it on Facebook, I believe, the Meadville calendar, shared it as well, for folks to weigh in. If it's Wednesday night meeting, does it work for you? Or if you'd like a little more structure in informing a comment? But we're up to about 60 responses right now, with some pretty great ideas and, and input in terms of raising revenue and, and some things we can try. So I appreciate folks who weighed in, and I'll be sure to keep council updated on what this very unofficial poll is, is finding. So thanks, Leroy.
Thanks, Autumn. Jim?
Well, I've said quite a bit tonight. As I'll reiterate, we need to be devoting our efforts toward a number extremely important policy decisions, including a government study commission. And I think those need to take precedence over some of the other items that we have allowed to fill our agenda over the past year or two.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Sean?
I have a few things. This was kind of fun tonight. My wife was watching This Is Us, and it's a TV show, it's, it's a real good, it's a drama, it's kind of fun. But anyway, it's set in Pittsburgh, and the kid was playing football and he got hurt, but the, a coach, and he says he's from Allegheny College in Meadville, Pennsylvania, right up the road. So we had a reference on Allegheny on a national show that's probably number one, I don't know, it's kind of fun. It's a good show, if you ever get a chance to watch it. But that was neat. Journey Brown, I wish the best to him. I watched him score his first touchdown in Little Gritters. I was just lucky, he was on my son's team, and this, you never know, it really broke my heart, and I know a lot of people in Meadville feel the same way about this, that he isn't going to be playing anymore, but you just never know what's going to happen, and I'm sure he's going to succeed in anything he does from here on out. And this COVID, I just keep thinking about this, and the circle keeps getting smaller. I, I mean, it's closer and closer to me every time I hear a name that people who have it, and it's sure it's going to get into our home. And we had to cancel my mom's 90th birthday party this week because of the COVID, and of course, she has been exposed and she's being tested. So it's just, just please wear a mask and social distance as much as you can. It's not going to get better for a few more months, I don't think, but I'm sure it will. That's all I got to say. Leroy?
Sorry, I didn't unmute my, my phone. Larry?
Yeah, I agree with Sean and Autumn also with this COVID thing, we need to really, really be more aggressive wearing our masks. I also like to take time to thank the people that weighed in tonight with their ideas and thoughts, and encourage more people. One of the main points I think people need to realize is we're city council, we need people to start going through our legislature, our senator's office, and putting pressure on them. We need to work with our commissioners to make sure that they are doing all they can. As Joe stated, we can only raise revenue by property taxes. We don't, that's only a recourse. So, but if we get enough people to weigh in and start making our, our Congress and legislature do more and see the real problem and unite with other counties, there's a possibility that things can change. I also want to take the time to thank Andy and them for what they, what they're doing. It's mind-boggling, all the things that I've, I've seen Andy handling at one time, all the whole staff. I mean, it's, it's amazing, all the things that they're doing, I like to really thank them. And again, I'm learning so much from them, watching how they do and, and the decisions that they have to make. It's, it's tough, it's really tough, so I just, I hats off to you guys.
Okay, thank you, Larry. I'm just going to take a few minutes. One, first of all, I want to thank those who called in, Lee, Joe, and giving us input. I'd be remiss not to say this, I had a conversation with the president of Allegheny College, Hillary Link, this week, and they make a gift, or call it a gift instead of lieu of taxes, because these nonprofits do not have to do this. So I want to point out that Allegheny College has agreed to the gift, not only, when I say Allegheny College, I'm talking to trustees, those higher up. We're going to keep their, their gift the same this coming year. So that's $75,000 that we get from Allegheny College that I just want to give them a thumbs up because they don't have to do that. And I just appreciate the, the trustees and President Link and former president working with, with the city and helping in, in other ways. Same with Meadville Medical Center. Meadville Medical Center gives a gift, we appreciate that. There's other nonprofits, I'm not saying that there aren't nonprofits that couldn't make contributions, but there are nonprofits that don't make a big deal about it and pay $8,000, $10,000 in property tax. So with that being said, we can certainly work with the nonprofits and asking them to help, but it still comes down to one simple fact, it's a business. And to run a business, you have increases in cost of labor, insurance and everything else. So we have to keep that in mind, that every year it's a 7% to 10% increase in business. Now, we should have probably raised taxes over the last 11 years, but we're also looking at the people, can they afford it? When you look at your tax statement, please stop and look at it clearly, and look at the different bodies that you're dealing with, from school board to the county to the city of Meadville. So when you look at your taxes, and when you talk about the city raising their taxes, take a look at that section of what you're actually paying for, the services that you're receiving in the city. 24-hour police, 24-hour fire protection, your streets are plowed, streetlights are on. And the city of Meadville, of course, is the county seat where you have a lot of the nonprofit agencies so accessible in one area. So we can look at working with the nonprofits and asking them, we have in the past, and they have given. So I'm not, not against that, but let's just remember those who have and who are giving, that we appreciate what they're doing. And to come with Sean, with Sean was saying, yes, the number of viruses are rising on a daily basis, we're, we're getting up to the hundreds every day, almost. And the other thing I want to say is, I had a nice conversation with Becky Dawson from Allegheny College, and she has given the community a great deal of information. I encourage you to, to listen to the Facebook page that they have. She's been very helpful in giving ideas with businesses dealing with employees being exposed or possibly exposed. So wear your mask, like Sean says, and just work together, and we want to thank the county, the $500,000 is a big number to help us. And yes, we do have future costs we have to look at, but that $500,000 come in really handy, and we just want to thank them. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, and I, I guess we're staying on the same line, is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, I'm going to ask that, don't leave the call, I'm going, what I am going to do is I'm going to stop the livestream and start the budget hearing, I'm sorry, the budget study session, but don't leave this call, no one go anywhere. So once you do roll call, just give me a minute to stop the livestream, I'll start the new one, and then we'll call the next study session to order.
Leroy, I move to adjourn to study session.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Donahue?
Hi.
McKnight?
Hi.
Roa?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.